Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Planning Commission meeting to order. Do we have any public comments for anything not related to the items on the agenda this evening?
No, I'd like to add a couple things. Just for the record, I wanted to announce, I don't think anybody's here for that, but I wanted to, PC Application 24-009, which was the PUD for Lakewood and Academy, that was withdrawn, so that's why it is not on tonight's agenda. If you remember, it was continued from the previous meeting. But again, that has been withdrawn, so that application will no longer go forward in any capacity. And then also, I want to introduce our new member. We're back to a full Planning Commission of five, Stephen Harrison. He was appointed at the December council meeting, so welcome, Mr. Harrison. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I think we need to nominate and elect a chair and vice chair for the Planning Commission. I nominate Brent Linford.
I second that.
I thought the plan was dead.
You're most qualified.
Any other nominations?
Okay, we got a motion to nominate Brent Linford by Lloyd Lance and a second by Phil Nichols. Phil Nichols?
Yes.
Zach Robbins?
Yes.
Brent Linford?
I guess.
Lloyd Lance?
Yes.
And Stephen Harrison?
Yes.
All right, five oh. Congratulations, Mr. Linford.
Does that mean I have to come to the meetings?
Yes. We can switch you to the chair. You can sit in the middle now.
Oh, I can?
You've got to be the big dog. We'll switch you around.
Just like in the real world, more responsibility and no better pay.
So am I supposed to move now?
Yes. Then we'll go to vice chair.
Yeah, so if you'd like, you can open up the nominations for vice chair.
Okay, this time we'll open up nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Zach Robbins for vice chair.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion for Zach Robbins and a second by Lloyd Lanford. Lance, sorry. Any other nominations? Seeing none, then Phil Nichols?
Yes.
Zach Robbins?
Sure.
Brent Linford?
Yes.
Lloyd Lance?
Yes.
And Stephen Harrison?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you, guys. We have our chair and vice chair.
Okay, this time we'll propose the approval of the minutes of the 12th of December for the planning meeting.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
All right. Phil Nichols?
Yes.
Zach Robbins?
Yes.
Brent Linford?
Yes.
Lloyd Lance?
Yes.
Stephen Harrison?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the proposal for 201 North 13th Street.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, yeah, this is a discussion and possible action on the, on a request to amend an existing special use permit to allow an increase in the number of units from five to seven. Back in February of '23, the city council approved a special use permit to allow for a five-unit bed and breakfast at the location 201 North 13th. There were conditions, the bed and breakfast shall not exceed five rental guest rooms and a total of 20 people at any given time. Meals may be provided to registered guests, but no sale meals to the public shall be allowed. No cooking facility shall be permitted in guest rooms, no receptions, meeting parties are allowed, and they would get one thirty-two square foot sign. A couple things to keep in mind, one is, this is amending, again, the existing special use permit. So even if the Planning Commission and/or city council were to deny the request, the special use permit that was previously approved is still valid and stands. So at this time, there's no ability to revoke or basically make the whole thing go away. It's a decision on whether you're going to keep five or allow it to seven. Staff reviewed the application and basically from a land use perspective, did not find any reasons that would, that there would be a huge change from five to seven units. So staff recommend, oh, I want to comment, there was one public comment, a letter that was received that's part of your packet, and they're probably here tonight, so they can speak on that. And obviously, the applicant here as well. But staff recommends that it be approved for seven rooms and that the previous conditions or the current conditions remain, and the only change would be five to seven. So I'll put it back to the commission if you have any questions with me. If not, obviously, we can open it up to the public.
Has there been any issues with the property up until now?
None that staff could find that were any more than, if you want to say, a one-off situation. There was recently where they had a chamber after dark thing or event there in that, and so there was obviously cars and people there. But from our perspective, that's no different than if somebody has, you know, a birthday party at their house and, you know, as 20 or 30 people show up. But on a regular basis, there has not been any issues that staff could find or were made aware of.
Okay. Any questions from the... Okay, do we have comments from the public about this?
My name is Kenny Porter. I live at 1501 West Cleveland. Been there for 30-plus years. We've had several bed and breakfasts up there over the years, probably had four or five, and never really had a parking problem. We've had, we've had a couple birthday parties and events, like he said, the after-hours, what was it called, after-hours?
The Guthrie Chamber in there.
Chamber.
Chamber.
Chamber situation. Part of the agreement of us allowing him in our neighborhood to run his business was not to have any events other than guests staying there. It seemed like he's had multiple birthday parties, events, other situations. One night, we had, what, 49, I believe, 49 vehicles up there? We had a FedEx truck trying to back up Cleveland because he couldn't go down the street. There's a wall on one side of the curb where they built a retaining wall for that property, I guess, right there, south of him. And you couldn't get down the street within a couple blocks. There've been quite a few of these situations, and I'm a half a block from it, so I see it quite a bit. As, as he may made a police report on the parking problems up there, we checked with police department.
No, because honestly, they're no different anywhere else now.
Okay, so we don't know if the police department's ever been notified or anything. I think we have a couple times. And something else I was curious about, is this a bed and breakfast or is it a motel? Is Mr. Martindale going to live there, or is he running a motel or something, somebody else running the situation? So if he lives there, it makes it a bed and breakfast in our eyes. We can contact him if we have a problem. If he's not going to live there, not going to be his residence, that makes it a little different in our eyes. It seemed like in the two years since we've been up here last about this, he hasn't opened for business. So we don't know what it's going to be like with five rooms. With seven rooms, that's another two cars, four or five people. I mean, if you haven't seen five rooms operate yet, curious what seven rooms is going to look like. And if he's going to have seven rooms, is he going to be ADA compliant? Is that part of that situation? Is there... If he lives there, he can have five rooms and not be ADA compliant. If he lives there, or is not living there, he has to be ADA compliant over five. If he could have seven, I was curious about that. Something we can check into, look at?
Dan, do you have any comments on that?
I honestly don't understand what the question or the issue is.
Not, I'm ADA-
I'm asking, I'm asking if he's, is he going to live there, number one?
No, but there was never any condition or requirement to do so.
Well, this is what we're curious now, after two years of him not opening and seeing the situations that he's done thus far and went past everything we've talked about two years ago to allow him to do it.
What do you mean?
After chambers, parties, birthday parties.
Okay, so...
Drinks being served, what was the, there was a situation up there, they had some get-together. They were serving beverages and scones or cookies or something. We've had quite a few situations up there.
I mean, the applicant can probably speak to that. I'm not aware of that.
Well, my concern is-
Going, real quick, going back to ADA or whatever, I'm not really sure, you know, what that would entail because it's a residential use. If there are any ADA compliance in that, it would be on the applicant to do so. It's not by our code considered a motel hotel use, it's a bed and breakfast. But we have many Airbnbs that are in our community where the person doesn't live there in that, so this is really no different type of situation, other than there's more rooms involved than your typical Airbnb.
Let's see what five rooms look like first before we go to seven, what we ask for. Appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else? One thing that we do ask for is, if somebody has something else to say, then we would like to hear, but we don't want to hear somebody saying the same thing over and over, different people saying the same thing. So is there any more comments?
Hi, my name's Ginger. I'm the one that wrote the letter in your packet. I live next door to this bed and breakfast, and I'd like to address the comment that was made. We were all led to believe in the first meeting that someone was going to be living at the property and operating it as a true bed and breakfast, and that's not what's happening. And other than that, I guess I don't have anything else to add than what's in my letter. But I think you all should know there are other neighbors who are afraid to come here tonight for fear of repercussions. There's already been repercussions against us, so it's fine.
And you say in your letter, correct, that you were originally for this, but you have since changed, changed your mind?
Correct.
Why?
I even convinced neighbors to be in agreement with it.
You were all in at one point?
I thought it would be a good use of the property and to see the home fully used. And I knew the prior owners, and in them selling it, this was a condition. The person that wanted to buy it, Mr. Martindale, wanted to be able to use it as a bed and breakfast. And I wanted to help my neighbor sell the home. I thought a bed and breakfast would be no different because there used to be one behind me on Noble and 14th. And that did not affect us in any way, but this has affected us a lot. Cars in the neighborhood, the parties being thrown when it said there would be no parties. I'm confused why this permit even still exists, considering there's an ordinance that says, if not operated in two years, or in a year, the special use permit expires. So I'm confused by that, and I'd like an answer on that.
That's not correct. What the special use permit section says, if there is basically nothing done from the time that it's approved to a year, then it will go away. He's been actively working to get the building, or the house and the building in line to function as a bed and breakfast. And in a lot of cases, if there's a building permit that is required, then the issuance of that building permit automatically extends any special use permit. So far, what, with what he's having to have done, there wasn't any need for a building permit, but he's been in contact with us, so we know that he's working towards opening the business. So that in itself makes it to extend forward. And that's been typical for any special use permit we've had in this community.
I would suggest then the city council look at that ordinance and maybe correct some wording, but that's fine. I mean, we realize as citizens, we don't have a lot of control here, so we're just voicing our opinions.
True.
I mean, if it's got to stay at the five-bedroom, then I'm with Kenny, and I think we don't extend this to seven until we know what five looks like. And he's been actively open for some time. Otherwise, if you have any questions regarding my letter, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, that, I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Dan, do you have something else you want to add?
No, I'm good.
Anybody else who'd like to address the situation?
Hi, my name is Jim Martindale, and I'm the applicant in this situation. First of all, I want to say that I want to be a good neighbor, that's foremost. We have not actively opened as a bed and breakfast because we are basically getting that property as an historic property, exactly to where it is, back where it was back in 1902 when it was built. We have spent extensive time recreating what it was. We have period-correct furnishings. Everything has, we've spent a lot more time, a lot more energy, and a lot more money than we originally thought we were going to do, and thus, we haven't opened. I want to address the, the things that we have had there. I will tell you exactly how many and how that's affected. Last year, we had the 89ers Day and people for the community. And by the way, we haven't charged for any of this. It has all, all been a community effort. It's because we want the community to be there. This is, and historic houses, one of the most historic houses there. So we want to do it justice. Now, everything we've done, I want to enumerate them since, since they, they brought those up. The one was the 89ers Day. We also had two Christmas, the Christmas open houses.
Tours.
Pardon me?
The house tours.
Yeah, house tours, all for the community. Yes, they, they have impacted the parking, but only because the community was there. We had over 600 people through, I think, on the, the Christmas tour. And this year, I think we had about 500. We had a chamber after dark there, which was simply for the, the community, the businesses here. And we had a neighbor come over and had, she's part of the Historic Preservation Society, and she wanted her birthday there, and we allowed her to do that as well. That's the only, the only activities we've had there, and they've been all community events. One of the things that we have done is created two more bedrooms up there. We also created five parking spaces that were not on the property when we bought it. And so we don't park, there would be some street parking, but we haven't done that. I would encourage people to go by. We just don't do it. And we want to, A, number one, be a good neighbor. We've fallen in love with Guthrie. We are there about one week per month. We've got, our innkeepers are here in Guthrie, they live in Guthrie. And so we're, we're excited about it. I think the community's excited about it. If, if you ask around, you'll, you know, I, I think we're trying to do justice to, to the property. And I think we, again, are very diligent in, in doing a good job for the community and would really appreciate the extra, the extra two rooms. Again, we've created more parking. We don't see that it's going to be, and, and we will take it into consideration. I'd love to talk to my neighbors. I haven't talked to Kenny, and I haven't talked to my next-door neighbor, but I'd love to, you know, chat with them, because we want to be good neighbors. I mean, that's just, that's just-
When do you have a, do you have a date when you're going to open?
January 15th.
January 15th.
And we do have seven rooms.
Would there be, would you be open for some way for neighbors to, or concerned citizens to, if they have a problem, to be able to address it? Like an email or a phone?
Absolutely. Yeah, we've got our, our management who live here, they'll, they'll absolutely take, you know, take calls and if there's a problem, we want to, we want to address it. We don't want to be that guy. So we really want to, again, the reason I bought the property was because of the historic nature of it. And my wife luckily fell in love with it, and we have been spending literally a year procuring the antiques in it. I'd love for y'all to come by and, and take a look at it. And we've really, I think, done it justice, and done the city of Guthrie justice.
Any questions?
I'm glad, Mr. Martindale, that you seem to have an appreciation for the historic aspect of this property. That's a big part of what we are here in Guthrie. It's one of the, one of our claims to fame, maybe. And I think that it is something worth doing, what you're doing. I also, however, understand the neighboring property owner's reservations in requesting an amendment to the original special use permit. I can see why they would be concerned as well.
Oh, it, it does seem that they, there hasn't been a real test, you might say, of the original agreement. Personally, I would recommend that we approve the, the seven-room addition on a contingency basis that if there are additional complaints that are addressed because of the additional two rooms. I can't imagine two more rooms having that much of a bearing on the whole situation that if, if there is documented problems that have arisen, then we could readdress that at a later date. Is that something that could be?
Absolutely, yeah.
I think that would go through, you know, that would go through people making complaint to the code enforcement and things like that, and it would, it would pop up like that.
Yeah, but-
No, that's not something we would check on, Kenny, in this board. That's not-
It does no good for you to speak unless you're at the podium because this is being filmed for the city council, and if everybody just starts yelling out words, it's not going to help anybody. So if you'd like to address something at the podium, we'd be glad to hear.
I was just going to, if you want to put a specific condition on there, that it be brought back to the commission like in six months or eight months for, you know, further review or discussion, and that, you know, that's at your liberty as well to have a condition like that.
My personal view on this is, I don't know if there's going to be a difference between five and seven. Nobody knows that. And I, I too understand the concern. Anytime there's a lot of vehicles around in a neighborhood, I get that as well. I was at the chamber after dark, because I'm on the chamber board at the property. It was a great night, by the way. We're on public streets in a public town where people are going to park and they're going to do things. I, I understand there's a short-term timeframe inconvenience. But to me, the only concern I have, if we did it on a contingency basis, is how are we going to, how are you going to measure that? And what I'm simply saying is, is just because people are complaining doesn't mean there's really a problem. It could, but it doesn't mean it is. It could just be people that don't like it, that are upset about it. That's, that's hard to, that's, that's, I mean, that's really, I mean, how are we going to, is it going to be a number of calls? I mean, if somebody isn't happy with something, they could just keep calling and saying they're not happy about it. I'm not saying one way or the other, whether it's right or wrong, but how are we going to measure that?
Right. Right, and I, I know firsthand, living next door to the largest-
Right.
-hotel, bed and breakfast, things like that, but, you know, there are times when, yes, I absolutely hate-
Sure.
-when Prong has 300 cars. I, I understand it exactly. I, I empathize completely. I just think that it's something that, you know, that everybody has to work through. The owner, just, you know, just like these restrictions here. I'm sure that his plan is to try to keep us close to those five. I know things, things change. We make decisions in, you know, in, in business and things like that. But, but ultimately, I think that, you know, I think that everything becomes an issue of a, of a growing pain and a change into the neighborhood. And I, I just think that, you know, we really need to just kind of, you know, talk, you know, continue to talk for just a bit and just kind of make sure that we're, you know, make sure that we, we know what we, you know, how we want to, how we want to rule here.
Yeah, and I will say for the record that when some of the initial concerns came up, we did look into it. We did send the applicant, or the owner, a letter basically saying, hey, keep in mind, you have these in that. And then in communication with the owner, we found out, obviously, the events he had indicated that were going on. But there was, up until this point, there was literally one property owner that brought in, you know, any concern in that. There's, I think, two or three here now, but, you know, I, I feel bad that, for whatever reason, others that may have had concern either haven't stated it or for whatever reason felt like there's going to be some retaliation. I'm not sure what that, that's about, but up until this point, like I said, there's, you know, hasn't been a large outpouring of property owners saying there's an issue.
Yeah, and I think from my persp, I'll, I'll use Rob Hudson as an example. They've got an Airbnb that they don't live in, I mean, that I personally know. I mean, I don't really think that's relevant.
From time to time, they'll have parking, but it-
But my point is, nobody's living in the house every day.
Right, no.
I mean, that's, I, I just, I don't think that's a, I don't think that's relevant. It's an Airbnb. There's a lot of Airbnbs nobody lives in.
Right. Or they have, like, I think Mr. Martindale has, they have staff that takes care of it, not necessarily the-
And that is one thing that gives me some peace of mind, is knowing that there's staff here, and I know the staff, that are here to take calls, to talk to neighbors when Mr. Martindale isn't here. The fact that we have local people here that are charged with that responsibility gives me some peace of mind. A lot of people wouldn't make that investment.
I was just trying to come up with the, the situation that we could readdress it because right now, we're just guessing, and-
We're guessing on both sides.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, if I can make, point something out, the, the events that we have, which were community-based, weren't even under the purview of the CUP. It would just be a, a regular person. Because, you know, if you wanted to be on the home tour or the 89ers Day, I don't think that was even, the complaints we've had wouldn't have even affected the CUP, the special use permit, because it was just us opening it up. It wasn't part of the business aspect. It was just being a community member.
And I should clarify, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. Even if you don't put a condition on there, at some point, if any of the commissioners or commissioner as a whole feels that there's an issue or there's some concern, by your request, we can bring back that item or that special use permit to review, to, again, either look for revocation, to look for adding conditions, amending conditions, you know, that at any time, if there, you know, again, is a concern or, or feels like we got to a point that we need to address it. So even if you don't put that condition in there, yeah, it could be in a year and a half and say, yeah, we need to bring this back. That's possible.
Okay, are there any more comments from anybody?
Jim had just said he'd made more parking places. Is there a way we could look at how many parking places they actually have? How many staff is he going to have to run the business versus what he actually has parking on his own property? We were talking about the street parking, public parking. How many staff are you going to have to operate the business?
How many staff are you gonna have to operate the business? Where are they gonna park their cars? So, he's talked about he added two more parking spaces. I'm curious how much parking he actually has on his own property.
Yeah, we added five spaces by cutting into the landscaped area off the alley. We can park approximately 15 cars, and that would be the five that we created. There would be three by the carriage house. And then we have a long driveway where we could put cars. Keep in mind, the 15 that I'm talking about does not affect the on-street parking at all. And I know that that's used by folks, you know, overnight. We don't do that, and we wouldn't expect that our, you know, our operations would not be self-contained in the property. As far as our staff, Carrie and Dana, they have one car made. Because they don't live on the property, they would be driving. So, in no event, generally speaking, if there were seven rooms, you would have one car per... So, there's seven, plus theirs is eight. So, we would have ample parking even still for other parking, without using city parking. I know it's okay. I know people park there, park there overnight, which is fine. But we wouldn't have to do that. That would not be included.
I'm George Privet. I live at 1424 West Noble. That's been my family home for over 80 years, and I'm not 80 yet. I have a couple of questions. One, are all the rooms to be rented in the residence or some of them in the garage? I'm asking.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
I'm asking him. I don't know.
The seven are in the main house.
Okay. All right. I don't know that I have any serious concerns, other than the parking, perhaps. And did you say parking was being utilized in the alley? Is that correct?
No, that's the access.
Jim, would you mind coming up?
Where is the parking?
The parking...
Yeah, let's... Jim, would you mind coming up?
Yeah. There is an alley access on Cleveland that comes in. It's the city alley. It actually looks like a driveway. We created five parking spaces along that. And then there is actually, I didn't even count the... There's four parking spaces in the garage because it's standard parking. And then in front, and it has a port de cachet that... So, actually, if you wanted to count them, we're talking about using the driveway as well. But we have five off the alley, four inside the garage, two next to the garage, and then the driveway, port de cachet. We could put a couple of cars in there as well. So, again, there's ample space on the property without using street... Not that we wouldn't use street parking because of... But I'm just saying, as a good neighbor, we want to keep our business on site.
George, does that answer your question, George?
Yes, I have one.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so they spent five years since we've done this. Is that correct?
The original permit was approved in February of '23.
Okay, '23. Okay. Why don't we do the five years before we extend it? See how it goes. I mean, wouldn't that be logical? Why are we wanting to expand already when it hadn't even been used? Thanks to me, let's give it a try. See if we... What we approved already is satisfactory before we extend it. Yes, that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you, George.
My name is Carrie Clark Keller, and my husband and I will be the innkeepers. We've been in Guthrie for a couple of years. And I think what's important is the extension. I understand it hasn't been used for five people. But to have four more people at that size of a location, on that size of a lot, is not going to be a big difference. But it's really not fair to someone that's put so much time and energy to build something nice to share with the community and to have there to limit what can be done as far as having four more people there that could help him and revenue. I mean, I just... And I don't want to have it be seven and then review it because we're gonna have bookings and people that are booking out. But I guarantee you, Dana and I are not the type of people that are gonna want anyone there confrontational. We're not gonna have that. If that happens, we will address it, and we will handle it. And we will move guests to a different location, a hotel in the area or something like that. So, as far as that kind of thing, I don't foresee anything. But I just feel that with the amount of money that's been put into it, that it's not really fair to ask a businessperson to say, well, you proved it to us for three years, and then we'll see how you... If you can have that extra income, when it's really just four extra bodies in a house outside. So, that's all I had to say.
Okay, are there any other comments?
Jim made it pretty clear he has ample parking for 15 vehicles on his property. Can I bring him 15 vehicles tomorrow and we can see how these fit on his property? Is there a way... I mean, I have one vehicle. Can we bring 15 vehicles and see if they'll even come close to fit on your property, sir?
Sure, why not?
Can we do this?
That's not up to us. That's to the property owner and you guys. It has nothing to do with us.
Let's put it down. I mean, it's kind of a moot point because, really, if we have seven rooms, we're gonna have seven guests, which are gonna have seven cars, and we're gonna have eight. Do we have four in the parking in the garage? No, I've got stuff in there. Are we going to need that? Okay, let's say we don't have 15. Do we need 15? But yeah, could we stack and rack things like that? Yeah, we could, but we don't need them. But we can, for what we are operating, which would look like probably eight, nine cars, we have ample room to accommodate those. Could we stack and rack 15? Yes, we could. But again, again, we're... I'd rather be a good neighbor and just, we're not here to do a... I don't know what a nice way of saying it, but I just want to be a good neighbor, and that's what we're coming up doing. I wouldn't have put the kind of money that we've put in that thing, which we did not expect. But it's an old house, and it deserves it. And frankly, seven rooms, we're not gonna make a ton of money here because keeping that house up and running at the age of it is a very difficult thing. So, I would just appreciate the opportunity to do that, and we will be very good neighbors. Thanks.
Okay, do we have any proposals from the staff?
From the staff?
Not from the staff, but the board.
I'm gonna make a motion that we follow the staff's recommendation and approve the change to seven from five. I think we got... We need to... I understand everybody's concern when there's extra traffic. I get that. I'm the same way. I battle it every day at my office when I go there. I go to my house. We've got two or three neighbors. George used to be my neighbor years ago. There's two or three neighbors that I drive through on every Saturday during football season. There's 15, 20 vehicles parked alongside the road. They're there for four or five hours, then they leave. I get it, though. I do. But I think when somebody comes and makes an investment in our community and in one of our old properties that's important to our community, and they're trying to make... Create an opportunity for them to make as much revenue as they can, I'm in support of that. I'll be in support of that no matter who brings it before us. I don't see anything that's been unreasonable, the situations where... The four situations that were talked about, the 89ers Day, the two Christmas open houses, and the chamber after-hours. Chamber after-hours, they're a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and every member gets an opportunity to do a chamber luncheon or a chamber after-hour. I was at that event. It was a great event, and there were a lot of people there. There's no doubt about it. And they were there for about two hours, two and a half hours, and they left. So, my motion is we follow staff recommendations and approve, amend the special use permit for the bed and breakfast to go from five to seven guest rooms with the stipulations that are listed here.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
All right, so we've got our motion and a second. Phil Nichols?
Yes.
Zach Robbins?
Yes.
Brent Linford?
Yes.
Lloyd Lance?
No.
And Stephen Harrison?
Yes.
All right. And just so the audience knows, this will go to the first city council meeting in February. That word of final decision.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is 300 block of South Pine Street?
Yes.
Between Vilas and Springer?
Yes. It's a request for closure of an alley right-of-way. As you just stated, Mr. Chair, this is along in the 300 block of South Pine Street. It's between East Vilas and East Springer. As you'll see on the screen, it's not currently a developed or physically developed alley. It's full of trees, as you can see in that. Further to the west of that, or just to the west of that, was a previous vacation of alley right-of-way. So, even if this were to be physically improved, it can't go all the way through anyway. So, again, the request is to close that portion of the alley. The process is for closure by the city, and then the actual vacation of that right-of-way would go through the district court process. There were no objections from any of the utilities or Public Works. Cox did originally submit a concern, but they thought the underlying easement would... Was going to be abandoned, which it's not because there's actual utilities within that. So, the only thing that will go away is the actual right-of-way. So, it will become private property. 10 feet will be attached to the northern properties and 10 feet to the southern properties, and there'll be an easement in there for utilities. So, with that, staff has no issue or concern and would recommend that that port... That the portion of requested right-of-way be closed.
So, does that property get purchased by the people or...
No, through the district court process, when they actually do the vacation, it will automatically attach the northern 10 feet to those properties and the southern 10 feet to the other properties.
Just have an easement on it?
Yeah, and it'll just be an easement. So, yeah, the actual right-of-way will no longer show up.
Okay. Do we have anybody that wants to address this issue in the audience? Okay.
Make your motion?
Yeah.
To pass this, go staff recommendations.
Perfect.
I second that.
Second, all right. Phil Nichols?
Yes.
Zach Robbins?
Yes.
Brent Linford?
Yes.
Lloyd Lance?
Yes.
Stephen Harrison?
Yes.
All right, pass this five-o.
Okay, the next one is 417 Roundhouse Road. Do you have a report on that?
Yes. A lot of people probably don't even realize we have Roundhouse Road as a road in Guthrie.
Didn't know it existed.
Yeah. This is a request for a rezone. Currently, the property is rezoned or is zoned, I'm sorry, I-2, which is the most heavy industrial zoning we can have in our community. And they're looking to go to A-1, which is general agricultural district. When you see the zoning map, all of the properties around there, to the east and to the west, are ag-zoned. The property directly to the east is Mineral Wells Park. There's the pallet factory, or I think something like that, that's to the west there. But we have a lot of this zoning from the early years of our community and when the zoning went into place. I do not like any of the industrial around this area whatsoever. And even our comprehensive plan has basically been identified the same thing. It identified this area as open space and/or ag. The applicant is looking to have more agricultural-related activities on that property. But as it's zoned industrial, they're not allowed. So, again, that's one of the main reasons they're going forth at this point because they want to have some livestock uses in that on there that, again, in the industrial, isn't allowed. So, based on the comprehensive plan, and that, staff does not foresee any issue with recommending approval of the rezone. So, we would recommend that the rezone go from I-2 to A-1.
Now, is there a house on this?
Yes. Yeah, there's currently a house, and they also have another larger shed out there that was built two, three years ago. You can kind of see it's on the mound. And then they have some older, like, I think it's more like a barn or that that was there from many years past. It's one of those things where a lot of it probably wasn't seen back in the day. And so, now, we're trying to make sure everything's, you know, right. Because the other thing, too, is with the house, you're not allowed residential and industrial. So, if that house were to be torn down or burned down, it couldn't be rebuilt, given the zoning. Whereas with agriculture, it can. So, it's a more appropriate use for that property.
Okay, committed. Do we have any questions or comments?
Does that rezone affect anything? I see there's a road that goes through there. Just make sure it doesn't affect them negatively in any way, shape, or form.
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah, none of that will be affected. Just the actual zoning of the property.
Okay, that would be... That was my only question, is just make sure that that doesn't affect them any...
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve, follow staff recommendations, to change zoning from I-2 to A-1.
Second. Phil Nichols?
Yes.
Zach Robbins?
Yes.
Brent Linford?
Yes.
Lloyd Lance?
Yes.
And Stephen Harrison?
Yes.
All right, pass this five-o.
If there's no other issues or comments?
Say unless any of the commissioners have comments.
I just want everybody to be safe on these roads, even though we do act like it's a foot of snow when it's two inches. Everybody be safe out there. Is that it?
You can call the legislature, call the government.
We're done.